Your meeting of the Common Council of the City of Hudson to order, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Clerk's roll call.
Mayor Burchill is absent. District one, Morsat.
Here.
District two, Yakup.
Here.
District three, Bernard.
Here.
District five, Hoggatt.
Here.
And District six, President Vanslow.
Here. In the absence of Mayor Burchill, I'll be running the meeting tonight, but I will be retaining my right to vote as the sixth district alderperson. We will now start the interview process for the applicants for the fourth district alderperson opening, and Devin will explain the process which we will go through.
We'll use the same procedure unless there's objections that we used in 2010 when Rich was seated on the council. The candidates have already drawn the order in which they'll speak. We did that just prior to the meeting. The first candidate will give a personal introduction, and then will answer, you know, as part of their presentation, the following three questions. Do you have any specific concerns? Do you have any specific goals or expectations for District four or for the city in general? And why do you desire to become a member of the Common Council? Once the first candidate is done, you'll have the opportunity, if you have any questions for them, you can ask them. And once the first candidate is done, we'll proceed with the second and the third in the same manner. And then when everybody's finished, I have paper ballots here, the seating council members will then vote, and at any point when someone, one of the candidates receives three votes, that'll be the majority, and then that person will be sworn in and seated. So does that work for everybody? All right, and I believe Pam, who were first? This is Pam Brokaw, we followed by Jim Weber, and then Kurt T. Winkle.
Welcome Pam.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thanks for this opportunity to share information about myself and why I would like to serve as the alderperson for District four. My name is Pam Brokaw, and in 2001, my family moved to Hudson. My husband Andy and I had two school-aged children, and we were excited to experience the adventures and opportunities that our move to Hudson would hold. We got involved with some of the great organizations and activities that were available in our community. Our daughter Katie is now 24 and recently completed her second term of national service with AmeriCorps, and our daughter Brooke is 19 and a student at the University of Wisconsin River Falls. Earlier this year, I celebrated my 30th service anniversary with 3M. I've been in human resources since 1994. In 2011, I obtained my bachelor's degree, pardon me, my business management degree from Rasmussen College. Since moving to Hudson, I've been active in our community volunteering and serving as a leader with Youth Action Hudson, Hudson Girl Scouts, St. Croix Valley Youth Court, Hudson Lions Club, and other organizations and nonprofits that strengthen and benefit our community. In 2009, my daughter and I founded All Dressed Up, a program that provides formal wear to local teens and families who are facing financial challenges that impact their ability to purchase promware and participate in high school traditions. I'm the past president of Youth Action Hudson, and I organize the annual Hudson Holiday Boutique, a fundraiser that is now in its fifth year. I also volunteer with the St. Croix Valley Youth Court, an organization that processes juvenile cases that have been referred to us by local municipal courts. I've served one term on the Hudson City Council, and I am currently a member of the Park Board, and I serve as an election inspector. I believe that my previous experience on city council, park board, membership, leadership roles, and many community organizations, and a strong desire to help ensure that Hudson continues to be a community that we can all be proud of are all essential elements that qualify me for this position. Pardon me. The first question was if there were any specific community concerns that I have, and I don't have any specific concerns that prompted my interest in representing District four. Rather than concern, it's excitement to help set the course for what the future will hold with our community. As new families and businesses join our community, we need to ensure that we are positioned to embrace the changes and new ideas and opportunities that would be presented with this growth. This summer, I attended the community forum on heroin that was presented by the Hudson Community Foundation, and I gained a greater awareness about this issue. I'm very concerned about the impact that this drug is having on our families and our community. I think that an opportunity that does exist for us is to establish a resource or place that teens can gather, a teen or community center. My hope is that someday Hudson will have a community center that will serve as a resource and gathering place for people of all ages. The next question was if I had any specific goals or expectations for District four or the city in general. My goals of the city and District four are to help ensure that the lines of communication continue to stay open between our leaders and our residents and other bodies of government. I want to ensure that citizens know they can contact me with their ideas, questions, and concerns. We need to ensure that we're looking for new and creative solutions for challenges that we face. We can't get stuck in the rut of thinking that we must continue down a path because that's how we've always done it. Why do I desire to become a member of the council? I would like to join the Common Council because I believe that our community leaders serve as role models for our citizens of every age. In addition to leading with wisdom, dignity, and respect, we should also inspire our community members and encourage them to get involved. One of the greatest strengths of our community is the people who live here and their strong desire to help others. From organizations like Rotary and Lions Club to small grassroots efforts that begin over a cup of coffee in a classroom, our community is filled with individuals of all ages who want to make a difference. We need to foster and grow this enthusiasm and engage citizens in all ages in what is happening in our community. I believe that our community leaders serve as role models for our residents of all ages and as ambassadors that help to strengthen relationships and increase awareness about our great city. Thanks for your time and for considering me for this position.
Any questions for Pam?
I have, would you plan on running the following, the next term?
I do plan on running for the next term. I did not the last two elections because I had a daughter who was in high school, and my time needed to be dedicated to her and what was coming next on our, for our family.
And, and one question otherwise, pick one of these topics. How would you have voted on the school dog track rezoning issue, or the dock issue on First Street, or our overall parking issue in the city? Your choice.
The dock issue, well, we talked about that on the park board. I'm a member of the park board, and that was a tough decision because we have residents who have had docks on First Street, but yet it was public property. And how do we, how do we maintain a consistent policy about private property on public land? You know, we've got parks and neighbors who abut those areas, and how do we remain consistent and maintain what we need to do as leaders in the city? Even though it was difficult, and there were many folks who were impacted by the decision, it was tough, but we had to be fair.
And ultimately, you agreed with the council's decision, then?
I did agree with the council's decision.
Thank you.
Pam, you mentioned in your statements that we need to be ready for the changes which the future might hold, and you also mentioned that we need to have creative solutions for challenges. What are the changes and what are the challenges that you see?
Well, I see, you know, as our community grows and we're bringing folks in from different backgrounds and with different experiences, they have different expectations or what they might like to see in our city. And I think that, that it's our opportunity to kind of gather input from residents in our community. They bring, like I said, different experiences. We moved from Shoreview to Hudson, and we had a great community center in Shoreview. And I had, kind of have that in my mind, what a nice, nice facility, or what a nice opportunity that would be as a gathering place for our residents. I think as we look at different businesses that are coming to Hudson, and maybe we aren't all familiar with what those businesses are, how we can continue to gain sources of employment and revenue for the city through those businesses, but also helping maintain our quality of life here in the, in the city, and also to ensure that, that as we bring folks to the community, that they're able to see it for the gem it is. And that's where with the Hudson Holiday Boutique, we, but we estimate that about 3,000 people came into that last year, and those folks were from all over, from Minnesota and Wisconsin, and they were impressed by what they saw in Hudson. They visited our restaurants, they visited some of the other businesses in town, and they, folks are really recognizing what a gem we have here.
Thanks. Further questions? Thanks Pam.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Council members, I thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Jim Weber. I live at 604 Grandview Drive with my wife Marion and our dog Hope. We've lived in the Hudson area for over 30 years, and just, we've just been in Hudson itself for 15 months, but we've been part of Hudson all along. Our kids and grandkids live in Fargo and Huntsville, Alabama, and Hawaii, so they're kind of widespread, so we're staying here. After I graduated from Rose-Holman Institute of Technology, I went to work for 3M and worked there for 37 years. I started as an engineer in Cottage Grove, it was known as Kimlite at the time, and held a number of positions in supervisory and management, including serving on three different business operating committees. After I retired from 3M, I was a business improvement consultant, I had my own business, working with small businesses to identify and address a variety of problems. I excel at developing good relationships with employees between functions and with customers to prevent errors and solve problems. That was my method of operation, and did that with, developed trust, and was honest. I listened, and I was, tried to be fair with bringing people together. I served on the park board, the plan commission, and the town board of the town of Troy when Troy was developing its growth management plan. And that was a little bit tense at times, really tense at times, but we got through it, and we came up with what I think is a pretty, pretty successful plan of managing growth and keeping the character of the, of the area. I was also a member of the Intergovernmental Advisory Council when both the Hudson Fire Department and EMS were part of that council, and so I have some sense of the issues that those departments face. I'm a member of Rotary, and I've worked as a volunteer at a number of MPOs. I'm also an officer of River Valley Trails, a 501-3C organization that works for trail development and safe bicycling in the St. Croix Valley. It's been incorporated for about 10 years. I have watched and supported Hudson as it grew into a great place to live. I'm concerned about how this community will continue to grow, both in size and quality. For example, the current issue of how Hudson addresses a planned closing of the Hudson Golf Course and the developmental proposals that are there and will come will have a major impact on District four as well as on the city itself. Hudson has a number of major infrastructure issues to continue to address, including increased downtown parking, expanded street maintenance, becoming a destination for new bike trails, a new public building for fire and EMS, and water and sewer capacity. And budget is always a major challenge with all of those opportunities. The issues of how to support a good library and an expansion of our school system remain open and potentially contentious. We can't afford to waste time and energy not hearing each other. I'd like to serve on the council where my experience in guiding problem solving, often with groups that have different agendas, will fit nice with the council's current skill sets. I'll bring a new set of ideas and a different perspective for many of these issues. I have the time, the expertise, and the energy to serve Hudson effectively. Thank you for your consideration.
Questions?
Jimmy, does your plan to follow up if you are seated to another term?
Absolutely.
And then out of the three questions I presented, you kind of answered parking, so how would you have voted had you been on the council with the school board, dog track rezoning request, or the dock issue on First Street? Your choice.
The dock issue is probably the easiest one. I think when it comes down to legality, you, you really have to treat everybody one way, and you have to, you would have to vote to not allow those docks, even though they've been there for a number of years, they've never been legal. And if you don't, then you open yourself up for a lot of other issues, to same use of property.
Thank you.
I have a question. So a lot of times when we bring up our concerns to the mayor or whoever about issues like infrastructure or, or various things in our budget, one of the first questions he asks us in return is finding money. So you brought up a lot of, a lot of issues that require a lot of, a lot of money, and we, I don't necessarily disagree with a lot of the stuff that you brought up, but how would you propose to solve some of these problems privately that you feel you need to be prepared for?
Well, the, I think the first thing to do would be to look at the return on investment for any of those projects, because they are investments in the future of the city. And if you don't do them, the city can't grow. So it, it may, if it's worth, if the project is worth it, it may require borrowing money. So that's, that would be the first thing I would do. And then you're gonna have to, you can't do them all at the same time, but you need to look at it, see what's, what's the return on investment, what's the priority, which one do we need the most? And just create that list and start working on them.
So out of what you listed off, what would be your top three priorities?
I think downtown parking is certainly an issue. Street maintenance, I know there's some, you know, there's some long-term plans on that, but that is definitely woefully lacking in many areas, particularly on the major streets like Vine, which I happen to drive a lot now. That's, that really needs attention, and it's going, it's deteriorating rapidly. And probably the third one is water and sewer capacity, because that limits our growth.
Thanks Jim.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. As you may know, my name is Kurt T. Winkle. I have been a resident here in Hudson. This is actually my second time. We've been here for nine years now, and we were here before, moved away, and liked it so much that we came back and have no plans of leaving. I live up across from the YMCA with my wife and two school-aged daughters, so we're very involved in the community, just by virtue of having the, the two girls that I have. So that kind of leads into question number one, any specific community concerns? And one of those would definitely be working with the school district to determine, at this point, the feasibility of the UU project. That's a, a very current issue right now, so there's no doubt that that's, that's one of my concerns, and if it turns out that that property isn't feasible, I would imagine, regardless, the city and the school district will need to work together to find the solution going forward. Another concern is the road maintenance in the city of Hudson, which, while I was seated as the District four alderperson, we made great strides in, in moving forward with that, spending money that hasn't been spent like that in, in the past, making commitments to improving the roads, because it is something that all of you hear about, and I know that firsthand. As far as specific goals or expectations for District four or the city in general, development happens to be a very big concern, good or bad, in the, in District four right now. One of them is an existing development that still needs to be built out, and that's the former tourist center. And there will be a lot of discussion moving forward on what is coming in, what it's going to look like, and, you know, what impact that has on the entire city. And the other one is obviously the, the golf course. And there's a lot of things up in the air on that, but it's definitely something that I would expect to work diligently on, because it not only affects the city, but specifically it, you know, it's a District four impact to the residents around it. And obviously, why do I desire to become a member? And that is really, because I'm able to now, I want to finish out the term that I was elected to, to serve. I feel an obligation to, to do that to the voters of District four. And why I ran in the first place is to give back to the community. It's a community that we love, and I feel a, a big need to, to serve it, so.
I'll ask, are you, are you planning on running for the term after the seated expires?
I, I would run, yes.
Seeing how you were on the council with the questions that I previously asked, I have another one for you. Would you be in favor of a citywide referendum to raise the tax levy to offset our operational budget? Hypothetically.
At this point, I am not a fan of, of any referendums, just because I know of the impact that our street projects, for instance, are already going to have. And, you know, there's, there's no doubt that all of this is gonna have to be done in time, but I don't think we can put the impact all at once onto the residents.
Thank you.
Kurt, I think, just for clarification, do you like to just explain why you resigned from the city council, just so that, that's clear for people? I mean, it doesn't have to be specific, but in general.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. There was a position in the city of Hudson that I wanted to apply for, and I was informed that it was a conflict of interest to do so. And this resignation was directly from that, and that position didn't work out, and here I am.
Okay, so you were trying to follow the proper procedures?
Yes, it was, yeah, absolutely. I, I did not want to try to be covert about anything and, you know, resign if the time came, but, so this is directly from that.
Okay. Any further questions? No, thanks Kurt.
Thank you Kurt.
Are we ready to vote then, in Joanna Minnet, or you're, you're settled?
(inaudible) from jeopardy, maybe.
All right, we have four votes for Mr. T. Winkle and one vote for Mr. Weber. So Mr. T. Winkle has been reappointed. Congratulations Kurt, and thank you to Pam and also to Jim for showing their interest and coming down here to present their ideas to us. Certainly appreciate your interest. Yep, we can, Kurt, if you want to come up, Nancy will swear you in.
I, Kurt T. Winkle, having been appointed as District four alderperson for the city of Hudson, Wisconsin, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Kurt, maybe I'll be silent. (inaudible).
Okay, well, now hold a public hearing on ordinance number seven dash thirteen. Are there people who would like to speak on this issue? Just for reference, this is regarding the proposed ordinance related to chickens, keeping chickens in the city. Anybody here at all in the public hearing would like to speak?
City residents first.
City, pardon?
City of Hudson residents.
Yeah, city of Hudson residents, yes.
No, I'm not a city resident of Hudson, but I have been involved in this community for 51 years, and I have some thoughts that I'd just like to share. Hopefully you're gonna let me speak.
Are there any residents who would like to speak first? Yes, we are gonna let you speak, by the way.
Okay, all right.
Any residents who would like to speak first? If not, then, if not, then why don't you just?
Two minutes.
Nobody wants to speak? All right, why don't you give us your name and your address or your location and?
Sure, my name is Dolly Qualls, and I live out on Highway 12, 759, East Highway 12. And I've been a part of the Hudson community for 51 years. I was a teacher in the district here for 36 years and have been involved in many, many projects in the area. However, I read recently in the paper about the chicken issue, and I noticed that some people were opposed. It really surprised me, because anyone who has children, young children, grandchildren, whatever, that anybody would be opposed to this. Chickens are very, very quiet, and they're really good kinds of pets. Anyhow, and I want to approach this from the sustainability issue, and I hope you're aware of the CHIPS or the SHIPS program, as Minnesota calls it, which is the county or state health improvement program. Hudson has a very, very vigorous program, and it started about three or four years ago, and they focus on ways for people to improve their health, get rid of unhealthy substances, improve nutrition. But it's basically a sustainability program, how to meet family food needs in healthy ways. One of the things too, that you're probably aware of are the community garden plots. One is up behind the Faith Community Church and one up by the hospital. This is an outgrowth of that CHIPS program, the Sustainability Program. And of course, you all are probably aware of the Hudson Sustain Group, which does great things for our community. While I was, I was heavily involved with that program when they got going, and I was able to go to a conference in Stillwater where they were dealing with Minnesota's issues of that SHIPS or CHIPS program. And one of the discussions that came up with that project was about raising chickens, hens, in their backyards. And the lady that was the guest speaker was there from New York City, and she just spoke really elegantly about the program that New York City has for people having chickens in their backyards. And she said New York City has absolutely no ordinances against them, and she says they have very few problems, very few complaints, and she says that they take it on a case-by-case issue. I've been a farmer my whole life, have lots of chickens over the years. I've also been a nutrition educator for 36 years. And those of you that know me know that I have a really pro-child stance, and I put a lot of effort into environmentally safe procedures. However, one of the things I found in all my years of teaching, young people are really interested in wanting to know where their food comes from, before it gets to the grocery store. And a lot of that was before all the buy local kinds of things. A lot of research is showing now that origin of food is becoming more and more discerning for consumers, and maybe some of you are aware of what the COOL issues are and the GMO and the BRST things, common concerns. They want to know what's in their food and where it's coming from. And of course, you've all heard the words reduce, reuse, recycle. And boy, do chickens ever do that well. One of the things that I find, like for the city, people throw away their food waste down the garbage disposal, and it ends up down on Second Street. And of course, that stuff is just like leaves, it has a lot of phosphorus too, puts extra load on the wastewater system, and then of course, then it all gets into the St. Croix. And of course, some people end up putting it in their trash. Ah, there's some people who probably have compost piles. However, hens are wonderful about eating food waste. It doesn't cost you a lot to raise a hen, and they eat grasses and bugs, really get rid of ticks, mosquitoes, all that kind of stuff. And one of the neatest things about hens is what they produce. They produce a very wonderful- They produce a very wonderful natural fertilizer that many people add to their garden plots. If you have to go buy it, it's called Chickadee Doodle, and it's gonna cost you about 30 bucks for 25 pounds. Anyhow, and, so that can be used in garden plots, flowers, all that kinda thing. However, dog and cat poop are not to be used in any kind of food plots. Anyhow, but all these kinds of things are part of the sustainability project, and we want to help families keep their food expenses down inexpensively. Chickens make wonderful pets for children and adults, they're gentle and easy to handle, they're very quiet, now I'm speaking of hens, roosters are kinda noisy. However, one of the things, you know, chickens, people say, "Well, let's go to bed with the chickens." Well, you know, chickens go to bed quite early. They aren't howling under your bedroom window at all hours of the night, and they aren't, you know, barking all night long 'cause somebody didn't let them in. And special needs kids are really very, very tuned in to chickens, because when they're little, they are very tactile in one way, and then as they grow up, they like petting them, and so, and we are lucky enough, excuse me, to have an autistic child in our extended family. Chickens aren't expensive, excuse me. However, chickens, we know, don't bite or kill songbirds, they don't, you know, damage lawns, they don't go and pee on your bushes and all that kinda stuff. Anyhow, and we have to think about the education component. Almost all elementary classes hatch chickens in spring. Biology classes do it too. Homeschool children and 4-H kids use a lot of chickens for science projects. I am confused about limiting the permits to 15 families. I don't know if you have a limit on the number of cats and dogs people can have in the community, I don't think so. I feel this is very discriminating. The high cost of a permit for five hens, $50, compared to one big fat cat license, $7, that's discriminating. I think it's really cruel. Anyhow, for a woman that's had a lot of experience in new livestock, and have a healthy background to help people, I encourage you to think of all the positives for hens and families. Is there many more benefits? Oh, excuse me Randy, thank you. And so, I, but I think we need to look at it more economically. The high costs it is, it almost makes it looking like you're trying to discourage families to be able to do this, so. And then, all in all, in the very end, you know, there's always a chance for a good pot of chicken noodle soup. And so, I don't see there's anything wrong in having chickens, I really don't, because they're, excuse me, they're quiet. Thank you, I'm just afraid.
Thank you. Okay, any, any, yes. Yep, please just give us your name and address.
Sure. I'm Heather Matthews, I live at 927 A Street, and I represent Hudson Urban Chickens along with Jen Harriet. And I just wanna say thank you to all of you, city attorney, Chief Jensen, all of the council members, for taking time to listen and talk about this, and craft what has been really, is what is actually a really nice ordinance. We're really happy with the compromises that have come up with it, and I just wanted to say thank you. We're looking forward to going on to the next leg of the journey.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing then, and move on to?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion and second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. Are there any citizens present who would like to make comments regarding any issues that are not on tonight's agenda? Okay, move on from there, consent agenda items.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of October 21st, 2013. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $472,583.36. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of four regular operator licenses for the period November 5th, 2013 to June 30th, 2015, contingent on payment of any outstanding debt that is owed to the city. A detailed description is available on request in the clerk's office. To approve the Chrome and Candy Car Show event in Lakefront Park on August 1st and 2nd, 2014, and to approve the event as a community event. To approve the use of satellite office space for the police department at the middle school. To place on file the Hudson, North Hudson Community Access Board minutes from the meeting of November 22nd, 2013, and the quarterly report of the city clerk. That is all.
Move for approval.
Should be October 22nd, Nancy. Right, for the meeting?
October 22nd.
Okay, roll call?
Yaku?
Yes.
Benslow?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsett?
Yes.
Tewinkle?
Yes.
All right, we'll now consider a recommendation from FOTH Engineering to reject bids for Buckeye Storm Sewer Project and consider rebidding the project.
We opened the bids for the 2013 Buckeye Street Storm Sewer Improvement Project on October 17th, and we had three bidders. The low bidder did not acknowledge addendum one, so he's not in conformance with the bidding. And talking with the city attorney, she thought it was best if we rejected that bid. And then the remaining two bids were much higher than our original estimate, so we recommend that all three bids are rejected. And I did talk with the public works director, finance director, and city attorney about rejecting all three of them. They agree with that. And also that we rebid the project and we extend the completion date. One of the issues was we had a really tight completion date, we had it completed by January 24th, 2014. And due to the tight time schedule, we do know that there was one contractor that didn't even bid on the project. So what we would do is we'd go back, look at what our estimate was, where our price was low, where their prices were high, see if we can do any value engineering to help get the cost down, and then extend the completion date to November 2014, to give the contractors more flexibility with the completion of the project.
Can you extend it 11 months longer than?
Yeah. The, to extend it, we would get, for sure we'd get another bidder, 'cause I actually had a phone call during the bidding phase asking if we could extend it into April, and I said we couldn't do that because the river elevation would come up when we'd have flooding. And what it was is, the contractors right now are busy, the lining contractors, and so they didn't need the work here to get, to get done. So this, it's a small project. So because the project is so small, this gives them flexibility, as we'll call it, filler work, to come in and do filler work when they're between two big projects.
Yeah, I get that, all right.
So I'll make a motion that we reject the bids that are presented, and that we rebid with a completion date of November 2014.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any questions regarding the issue?
Now, simple question, why wouldn't we throw out the low bidder? In this case, because they missed the information? Do we need, do we need three on?
No, but the other bidders?
Excuse me.
My understanding it was a substantive addendum, that bidder did not submit anything on it, the other bidders did, the bids were open, and it would be an unfair process in terms of competitive bidding to accept the low bid and allow them after the bidding process.
Actually, I was saying, why wouldn't we throw out the low bid, since they weren't compliant?
That's exactly what the city engineer did.
Okay.
But then, because the other bids were so much higher than their original estimate, and the timing and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consider bids for the 2013 Sidewalk Kerb and Gutter Program.
This is our annual program that we've had for many years. It's a program where we do an annual sidewalk inspection, and we look at sidewalks per our sidewalk policy, and look for defects and safety issues and hazards. Our insurance companies, carriers are in favor of this. It's a, a way that we can have safe streets, or sidewalks, and we do an annual inspection, and the criteria we get determines what sidewalks we need to replace. A few years back, we went to a system where we would do removal and replacement, we would, some sidewalks are not, don't need to be replaced, so we've done a process where we can remove the hazard by saw cutting. Another process we have done in the past where there's a sidewalk that's lowered, or we can do a injection of a high-density foam, or we can level off sidewalks and remove the, the trip hazards. This year, we received two bids for the removal and replacement portion of this program. Zappa Brothers were low bid at $42,162.75. The 2013 budget, we budgeted $25,000, and we had a $33,000 carryover from last year. So the one removal portion of it is $42,162, and the other portion, the saw-cutting portion, is approximately $10,000. So we're within our budget.
Move for approval, or move we recommend that we accept Zappa Brothers' bid. I'll second it. Excuse me, second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, discussion? If there is none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Consider recommendations of the St. Croix EMS Commission to increase the base salary of the EMS director by 5% effective October 21, 2013, and 2% on January 2014, January 1, 2014.
So this came out of EMS Commission, and it was approved unanimously. There was an agreement when we hired Kim as the EMS chief, that we would take a look at her, her salary at the end of her probationary period, at the end of this first year. And so that's what we did. The commission overall's been extremely pleased with the work that she's done in the EMS department. I think there's been major improvement in organization and efficiency. Our budgetary position is certainly much better. Just overall, there's been a lot of improvement in the department, and so we wanted to honor that promise that we had made to review her performance. And this is a one-time increase that the commission's looking at, it equates to $2,800. And, and then the 2% would be if?
Under the proposed city budget, there's a 2% increase proposed across the board, so the 2% would be?
If we approve that, so. But this change, this 5% increase would be active, or effective, October 21st. So, was unanimous, our partners on the commission approved it. Um, so she went from 56,560, this would bring it to 59,388.
And this was less than the previous?
It is slightly less, yeah.
Okay.
Does this come just from the city of Hudson, or is it split?
No.
No.
It's joint.
Her salary comes out of?
It's part of the budget, and then it's split, oops, there's a flip-flop.
So the 2,800 is the entire increase, so not Hudson's portion?
Correct.
And we will cover it on the EMS budget, we're not asking for anything additional. Yes. So I'll make a motion, if I may, to approve the recommendation from the EMS Commission to increase the chief's salary beginning, beginning October 21st by 5%.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, further discussion? If there are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And I didn't include the 2% because?
That's dependent on what council decides to do in the budget.
Thank you.
Consider proposal by FOTH for a sanitary sewer system needs assessment Carmichael-Vine area.
At the October Public Works Committee meeting, we did a presentation on the impact fees updated from the 1999 analysis, then 2002, and current from 2002 to 2013. And at that meeting, the finance director and the community development director recommended that we do a new updated needs assessment area in the Carmichael and Vine location. And so this work order that you have in front of you is for this assessment in that area, Carmichael and Vine Street. As part of this work order, we have a rate of, our hourly rate estimated at $10,500. At the finance committee, they recommended that it be changed to not to exceed. So we can do that work for $10,500, not to, not to exceed.
Move to approve. Second.
So there's a lot of talk at finance about this study overlapping with the, with the storm sewer study, and that there may be places where there's work done that can be applicable to both, and hopefully some cost savings.
I, I'm hoping there can be some cost savings in both of them. We are using some existing models that were done in 1999, some models that were done in 2002. We're gonna look at those and review it, but I always like, any project, you know, you're doing, we'll call it like a reconstruction, you open things up and everything just explodes. But I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping we can save a lot of money, that we're gonna go in and look at both models, and they're gonna be in good condition. I am concerned right now with the storm sewer model. I did see, I ran the 100-year event, and there were some ponds that were flooding by over nine feet. So that was a, a concern. Why is the model showing that?
One other thing that was brought up at finance is that the finance committee will be reviewing these invoices more closely, I mean, as opposed to just reviewing the bills, so make sure that there is documentation that it's, doesn't happen.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion, further questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consider proposal by FOTH for a storm sewer systems needs assessment Carmichael-Vine area.
That's the same area, the Carmichael-Vine Street, that would be doing a needs assessment using, like I just discussed, the existing model, the Hydracad storm ponding model. We have that on our hourly rate, estimated at $18,600, and we will change that to not to exceed.
Move for approval.
Questions, discussion on this?
This is where we're gonna see some overlap, evaluate current, future land use areas, things like that.
Right, like the, the meeting with city staff, we'll have the meeting together. One meeting, we'll talk about storm and sanitary, delineate the areas, they may be the same for both, they may be a little bit different, but they're still gonna be in the same, the same area. And then, also, I was thinking down at the bottom, the report, instead of doing one report for sanitary and one report for storm, we could combine them into one, one report, instead of two separate ones.
Well, in land use analysis, you talked about as well.
Right, right, the land use map, we'll use the same land use, but for sanitary and storm, we do do some different analysis with the information we gather from the land use map. But I mean, that's why we're doing it hourly, because things can be used for the same, the same map for the two different projects.
Further questions? Discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider ordinance 713, chickens.
You did have first reading at the last. Yeah, we had first.
I'm gonna suspend the rules.
Don't need to.
No, because there was first reading, and you discussed at the last meeting, changing the license year, clarifying the height as measured from the ground. And, oh, we added, they've gotta be, can't have any delinquencies in taxes or assessments or claims against the city, and that they're subject to council approval. And those, those changes have been made in this ordinance.
Well, I'll move.
To adopt. Ordinance?
Seven, death.
Seven dash thirteen.
Second.
Motion is being moved and seconded. I, I would just like to make the comment that again, I, I do not find chickens and the city has compatible entities. I just don't see this as a good thing. I think there's going to be some devaluation of property. I think it's inevitable, it has to happen. And I haven't been in favor of it from the start, and I'm still. And I haven't been in favor of it from the start, and I'm still not in favor of it, although I will say that the people who presented this to the city did a great job with the way they presented it and the way they conducted themselves. So there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions?
I'll just speak to you, because I don't wanna vote and not give my rationale for why, but, you know, the biggest concerns that I've been approached with by residents are increase in predatory animals, whether it's raccoons, coyotes, and the other one is concern about, what if I don't want chickens in my neighbor's backyard? I moved to the city, you know, not to live in a rural setting. And when we talk about building a chicken coop ten feet from a property line, that's what people are gonna be looking at. It's not a shed that people are expecting to find, it's not a swing set, it's a chicken coop. And I'm not against organic food, I'm not against fresh eggs, I'm not against teaching children about, you know, the value of knowing where your food comes from. It's just an issue of compatibility. We can say lots of other cities do it, that's fine. Lots of other cities do things that we haven't adopted either. And the negative feedback that I've received from people is, and the fact that they're not gonna have anything to say about it once we approve this, is a reason that I'll be voting no. And I'm sorry to disappoint people, I said I would consider this, and I have read it, and I have, and that's a conclusion that I've come to with input from residents.
Well, I have yet to get, except for one person that spoke in the public hearing the first time, any other feedback that would suggest that there isn't anything but popular support, at least in my neck of the woods. I think the benefits far outweigh the potential property issues. I think I've seen more unkempt fences and sheds than, the, the chicken coop thing is much more of a, a personal pride issue in terms of keeping and maintaining a structure for animals in particular. And we actually have to go out and inspect and survey these structures so that they continue to comply with the ordinance. So I, I think there's lots of things in place to manage chickens in a positive manner. It helps, I think, encourage some people to move to our city that may not be interested if we didn't have chickens. Just seems like a positive thing, given the kind of support and the efforts I've seen and the way it's gone so far. So that's my two cents, and I'll be voting for it.
I just wanna respond to Dolly, I don't even know if Dolly's still here, if she's still here. I'm gonna respond anyways. She thought it was, I believe her words were cruel, to have fifty, or have the fees the way we have them, the permit fees that we have them. And I think she had mentioned that fifteen permits was discriminatory. Majority of this ordinance was written with the help of the urban chicken group. We did not, we worked very hard in public safety to compromise with them on, on various, various things that are, various definitions and various requirements in this ordinance. When we put a fifty-dollar fee on something, it's because we need to cover the costs of our staff. So yes, we don't have that for cats and dogs, but there is staff cost, a lot more staff costs that will go into this. As John has mentioned, we're gonna be doing a lot more regulation than we do for cats and dogs. They're not cats and dogs. So I think we're actually being nice with the fee compared to what some cities suggest. So, I know she's not here to hear that, but I just wanted to clear that up. I don't know, Lori, if trying to work out something, I know we discussed it last time with neighbor approval, I don't know if that would help, or if either way you're-
I just, I think that's a hard thing, because neighbors come and go, properties are bought and sold, and, you know, you can talk about property devaluation, that's a really hard thing to put a number on. But could it affect whether or not someone wants to buy a house next to someone with a chicken coop? I venture to say, yeah, it could. So there's a lot of positives, John, and I agree, for the owner of those chickens. And I'm not sure all the neighbors would concur with that. And I guess I'm siding with the neighbors who might not want, you know, if-
My other point of order is I haven't heard it, no one's come and talked to me about it. So I know you guys have said you got feedback, but I've only received one negative feedback in the whole thing, which I find amazing, because we get a lot of feedback about everything. So, so that to me is kind of fairly significant.
And maybe it's because I openly have asked people in my district, as I've had the opportunity, yeah, I'm just saying, I, I solicited it because people don't always, folks are busy, and they're not always watching the paper and catching the one article, so. And I'm guessing most people aren't watching us tonight either, given what else is on.
I gotta agree with John, I only had one negative and three positive comments just this last week leading into this decision, and then before, it was all positive. So with that, I call the question.
I, I just, there's just one thing I want to clarify, and it is in the ordinance, that if individuals live in areas that are governed by associations, they do need to get permission from the association. And I know that everybody that's been involved knows that, but just so the general public out there doesn't go ahead and start this process and then find out that they can't do it, so I just wanted to mention that. Sorry.
Yes, and the city will not get involved in association matters. Let's clarify that as well.
Call the question.
Do we need to vote on calling the question?
Not necessarily, but-
I'm gonna call point of order on Randy, because he does it on us all the time. Do we need to vote on calling the question?
I think we do.
No.
I think we do.
I think no is the answer.
No, I think we do.
No is the no.
Second required.
Yeah.
It's a debatable, no, amendable, no.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second? We need roll call?
No.
We don't need roll call on ordinance?
It says two-thirds.
No, this is just to close the debate.
This is just to close the debate.
Yeah, just to close the debate.
All right. So this, this is a vote to close the debate.
I'm making you better at your job.
This is just to close the debate, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I just wanted everyone to get a chance.
Now we have the motion on ordinance seven thirteen chickens.
You're not gonna roll call unless it's a close.
All right. So is there a motion for this?
I already made a motion.
You what?
I already made a motion.
Okay, motion's already made, the second's already been made. Motion and a second, any, any further questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four in favor, two opposed. Motion carries. Project update from FOTH Engineering.
Did that happen at the same?
Yeah.
We'll work on that.
The chickens did it.
Update on the two thousand thirteen stream improvement projects, all the roadways have been paved now. That we're gonna get done this year. We haven't started on First Street, and the contractor didn't think he would. They may start doing some work on the sanitary sewer and adjusting the rims, but we're not gonna be doing any miller overlay on First Street. The pavement markings, the weather has been wet and not cooperating with the project. So hopefully when it dries up, we can start getting the permanent pavement markings on, on the road. Red Cedar Canyon Valley View, it's right near the entrance on the north, there was a private road that was on the north end that now is a public road, and they want to start construction on there next week, November eleventh, starting on some utility works. We're gonna watch the weather and determine if we're gonna allow them to put down the concrete curb and gutter and the pavement, but that-
Where, again?
That project should go very quickly once they start working on it, but we'll see what happens with the, the weather conditions.
What's, what's going on in Wisconsin? Is there a couple like manhole covers or something there?
Do you know what's going on with that one? I'm assuming it's a-
Barricades right in the middle of the road, they go up and down every day.
Oh, the ninth in Wisconsin, is that what you're talking?
There's a hole.
We did get quotes, and taking care of that will be taken care of shortly, correct?
Oh, it's a storm sewer manhole, that, that we do have quotes, and we're gonna get that repaired as soon as possible.
Just wondered, it's not allowed, so.
Earlier, later, you know, earlier, a few weeks ago, we had some stormwater and sanitary sewer televising done on Wisconsin Street for, to prepare for the upcoming project. And there could have been some manholes down in that area too.
Thanks, Senator.
All right, the next item is a proclamation for Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in Wisconsin and nationwide by focusing efforts on public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network supports those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as to, to those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure, now therefore, I Mayor, Mayor Alan D. Burchill declare November, two thousand thirteen as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in the city, and call upon all citizens of Hudson to raise their awareness about pancreatic cancer, early detection, and research on causes, effective treatment, and a cure for this disease. Okay, communications for future agenda items, council members.
I just wanted to congratulate Jan Doonan on her thirty years of, plus years of service to the city of Hudson, and her dedication, and the big turnout on Friday, not only for the reception, but for the dinner. It was really great, great showing of people, so congratulations to Jan.
Anyone else? City Attorney?
Nothing.
City staff? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.